Thank you, six seconds. Good evening and welcome to our council and committee of the whole meeting for October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Bienvenue à notre réunion de français pour le quinze octobre. For the land acknowledgement tonight, I guess I'll do it because I didn't give the piece paper to Council. Hey, I'll try that again for our land acknowledgement this evening. I'd like to pass the floor to Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Je souhaite rendre un moment pour souligner l'importance du territoire sur lequel nous sommes rassemblés. La municipalité de Négoise reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples Achini-Chabé, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations Nébéssine, Thémangami et d'autres, é签é par le traité Robinson Uro. Nous honorons leur lien historique avec le territoire et nous valorisons leur contribution considérable au façonnement et au renforcement de nos communautés. Ce faisant, nous réaffirmons notre engagement et notre responsabilité envers la réconciliation et l'amélioration de notre compréhension des peuples autochtones locaux et de leur culture.
Merci beaucoup. Next, I'll take any declarations of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, move on to the document of the agenda.
It was moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rivar. Be it resolved at the agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on October the fifteenth, twenty twenty four, be adopted as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Dr. Cabbie. And the first item on our agenda this evening is a petition which you have a copy of in your packages for local improvements on Canal as per procedural bylaw. We will receive petition this evening and it will come back for discussion along with the staff report at our next meeting. Thank you. Moving on to our committee of the whole, we have a couple items under public works for which I will pass the floor to Council Gagne. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we'll move on to item five point one point one. A petition for a speed limit on Charlie Bay Road, Slap Tomco Road, which was introduced actually at September seventh meeting. So I would like to pass it on to you, Monsieur Bakbo, if you want to talk about it, or I can pass it on to Miss Enning.
Pass it on to me, please.
So I'll pass it on to Miss Enning just for a quick update.
Yep, so there's really no concern with changing the speed limit in this section. There is quite a few residents seasonal and otherwise in this area. And if the residents wish to have a lower speed limit there, there's no reason why it couldn't be reduced. So if council wishes to do that, then I have nothing to address that.
Thank you. So I'll open up for questions by board members or council. Any questions? We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering, I know that we've had it in the past in other areas. This because of the areas, that way it's coming to us and it's not like a whether it's a highway or a different road. Because I know that other people have asked to have speeds reduced and it didn't happen. So I'm just wondering why this area?
Um, there's a high concentration of homes in this area. So that would be why, I mean, if the if the speed stays at the sixty kilometers an hour, I think that's there's no issue with that either. But if it's lower to forty, I mean, that's there is quite a few homes there as high of a concentration as you would see on many of our streets here in town. And we have forty kilometers per hour, so there would be no harm in that.
Thank you.
You. We'll see you, Lady.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have OPP's advice on this that we'll receive?
Um, no.
Recommendation article?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions? Show of hand is everyone in agreement to reduce the speed limit to forty kilometers? Very much. That's good, Miss Enning. Move on to item five point one point two, which is construction updates. I'll pass it on to you, Miss Enning.
It's, um, most of our projects are rocking up. Eugene Bridge should be completed November fifth. The abutments are are now in. Bridge will be going on soon. Front Street paving right now, it's currently milled. They're just finishing up some of the curb work and it will be paved by October thirtieth. John and King Street are complete. Brushing and ditching, they started today doing brushing and ditching on De Trusac Road and that should take approximately two weeks to complete. That's all for construction right now.
Thank you. So I'll just go through the item quickly to see if any councillors have any questions. So for Eugene Bridge, any questions by councillors? Questions? For Front Street, from issue double ditch. Go ahead, Consigliere Abbi.
Thank you, Monsieur Gagne. I have a question and we have anything to do with the contractor doing the work? I'm just looking, there's a couple places that there's some holes, there's somebody that doesn't know about it. I guarantee this is people from all that time or whatever, they're damaging their cars when they hit those 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 halls. Are we involved in this or is it just the contractor's job to?
It's typically we don't direct the contractor how to do their staging because then we would be taking on the liability for that. So that's up to the contractor to do. I mean, we can advise them that we'd like some more markings at some of these areas and I will be doing that. But yeah, typically it's the contractor. You want them to be responsible for the staging.
I know it's hard, the traffic is going and they're doing their best, but there's a few places there. Anyway, okay, that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions by council member? Good. Move on to Front Street was complete and there's a ditching on De Trusac Road and also Stewart Road.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One question on the John and King Street project, so completion October eleventh. We that is a finished at this point? Is there a final?
I think so, there might be some deficiencies that still need to be addressed, but the majority of the work is finished, yes.
It looks good.
Anything else, Madam Mayor?
No, thank you.
Any questions on the ditching that is currently being done? Questions? Thank you very much for the update, Mr. Gagne. Move on to item five point one point three. Request for delayed green lights on Front Street intersection. If I'm not mistaken, this was submitted as an agenda item by Consigliere Ball. So maybe if Consigliere Ball, you would just give a brief information what a delayed green would cure and why, please.
Consigliere Gagne. So this is something that came up during my canvassing two years ago where I guess there was a resident in Ward one who had got hit, him and his wife, two, three years ago. Still fit, dealing with some of the effects of that. And then someone else, quite a few others got some pretty close calls, myself included, just maybe about a month ago. So I decided to put this on. We I spoke with the mayor about it and we saw that some other cities, obviously larger cities, if you press the pedestrian crosswalk button, it'll give you delayed green. So everyone would have a red for three, five seconds, whatever it may be. And the idea is it kind of helps pedestrians get into a better line of view for any commuters who want to turn left onto the onto Front Street. Typically, that's the issue are people on King, Hippey Seine or Corsole trying to turn left onto Front Street, whether going north or south. So this was just an idea that it seems like other places do it if they press the pedestrian light. So you want all of that delayed green, but I think it could just add some safety for pedestrians and kind of make the make pedestrians feel safe. That was my idea.
Out of it. Okay, thank you. Miss Enning, do you want to add anything for that? Open up for questions, please.
Yes, I'll I'll just add to that. So the the olive red cycle in the lights, we do have that. It's we could look at extending it longer. I will let you know that right now all of our intersections have traffic loops in the ground that sense when vehicles are there to control the light timing. Currently, all of our traffic loops are not working. This is a recent discovery. So we are looking at budgeting to replace those with, we're not going to put loops in because the loops you have to tear up the asphalt and they only last between ten and fifteen years. Our current loops, I believe, are only seven or eight years old and they're no longer functioning. So we're looking at the overhead detection cameras, which is the newer technology. It's a lot easier to replace than traffic loops because you don't have to tear up any asphalt. So we will be looking at putting that into our capital budget for next year to replace those. And so right now, because those loops aren't working, our traffic signals are all working basically in default mode. So they're not also sensing, you know, when a vehicle is sitting on Nipsey Street, it's just going on that cycle. So that's something else that we need to correct on our lights.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up to any other questions.
Okay, currently do all three of our intersections have pedestrian crossing buttons?
Yes.
And is there any cost associated with changing the timing of the lights outside to say this the staffing cost, but is there is there any other cost that would be associated in implementing this idea?
There's, I believe there is some cost in in doing that. There was a study done that determined our signal timing. So if we're going to make any changes, we may want to look at having a consultant determine, you know, what would work best for changes. But at this point, I haven't done a whole lot of research into what would be involved in that.
And I just say, as Council Rivar said, we we spoke about this. It was something that we saw when we were in Ottawa and it certainly did seem to improve pedestrian safety at intersections and both for left and right handing hand turns. So, you know, like the the right hand turners have to stop and they're not kind of in a rush to get into the intersection and maybe not see the pedestrians, you know, kind of in a in a blind spot or whatever. So, you know, I do think it's something that could improve pedestrian safety. And if it's a limited cost, I would be supportive of it. Thank you.
Questions by council? We'll see you, Lady.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So like you're saying, right now, there's nothing we can do until we put those cameras next year, add them to the budget and fix it next year, right?
Yes.
Is there a warranty on the system that would not now?
I don't think there is, no.
No, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. So it will be an item that will be brought up at the budget time. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item five point four, truck traffic on Sabo River. So you want to talk about it?
Well, I think that the through you, Mr. Chair, I think that the issue is that we've received several complaints and you have received several complaints and have passed on several complaints to that area back in the that road was recently just resurfaced. Some of the complaints dealt with the dust, given the volume of traffic that exists there. And the and then the specific complaints are with the dump trucks that use it as a direct line from the pits to get to up Highway sixty four. Since then, I understand there's still truck traffic on the on the pavement or the hard surfacing. And it is, you know, obviously it's always existed there. So, you know, this this resident is a newer resident. This issue is not a new one with respect to that road being used from the quarries that are down Driving Road a little bit. So it's always existed. That being said, it is a new road and it would be up to council to decide whether they wanted to make a permanent solution to limit traffic, heavy traffic on that road. And I think council, I think Ms. Henning could provide more detail as to what how that would how that would happen if council wanted to entertain that. But recognizing that the trucks then would just go down the other part of Driving Road as well. So the truck, you're not getting rid of trucks, you're just putting them on different roads. I don't know, Miss Henning, if you have that.
So I think that pretty much sums it up. I mean, ultimately, council could decide to make that a no truck route. I think I believe Corsole Road has been made a no truck route. I still sometimes see trucks on it. So ultimately, it comes down to enforcement, like we can make it no truck. But if trucks choose to use it and there's not enough enforcement, then there might not be a large difference on the road. I mean, yes, I would love to have no trucks on that road. We just resurfaced it. That would be great, but it is a public road and right now, aside from reaching out to the companies, which we are doing, there's not really anything we can do to actually enforce no trucks on the road without changing the designation of that road.
So go ahead, Consigliere Abbi.
Thank you. This this road is newly paved. It was paved before with a lot of holes, but now it's newly paved. And the complaint is there's dust.
No, I think the complaint was prior to it being paved, when it was gravel, there was dust. Now that's not the complaint, but the complaint is still that there are many heavy trucks that go along easterly on that road from the one complaint.
If we were to close that big trucks on that road, we would be sending our trucks on right into the residential area because you're looking at Cal Bay Road. And then it's all resident all the way. So Sabo Ray, you got you got houses on one side, but fields on the other side. So you have less less potential of running into residential, keeping the trucks on Sabo Ray. So I'm I'm okay with the way it is now.
Just maybe if I can add a comment to that, Consigliere Abbi. I was thinking more of getting the keeping the trucks on the major roads, which actually be sixty four and the highway as much as possible and try to remove all that traffic from our our internal local road that we actually paid to pave. So right now with the volume of traffic, if that is the case, that there is a lot of traffic and seems to that resident that there is a lot of traffic, the resident wants to keep that road in good shape for as long as possible. Their request was, can we do something to limit the trucks from going there? Obviously, if there's somebody building there and they need gravel, we're going to get they're going to get a gravel truck. But it looks like some morning they're working about ten, twelve trucks going by in the morning on some occasion. I'm not saying every day, but on some some occasion. But I haven't been there to actually count them, but according to this residence and we do want to save that road that's freshly paved at the current moment. So I I guess one question that I did have is how do we like, there's always a line of sight or shortest distance possible or use major highways or major roads that are actually paved? Like Sabo Ray is a gravel road with tar or tar in the bottom with gravel on top. So that it's not as robust as a fully paved road, I guess. So how would we go about to actually say that road and that road, that road?
So you have to, I mean, change the designation of the road as the bylaw, I would believe, and you'd have to sign Severn and then you would probably have to sign Drive-In as well, right, to force the trucks out to seventeen and around up to sixty four. So that would be that would be the solution for that. Yes, and I will say that I have been out there and I have seen there are quite a few trucks taking that route. It is something that is happening.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, you mentioned enforcement, that would be OPP enforced?
Yes.
Okay, and the the alternate route that they may go through would be Cash Bay Road, which is also, as we said, highly, is there, there's no sidewalks along Cash Bay Road?
Yes, there are sidewalks along Cash Bay Road.
And is Cash Bay Road like proper asphalt paved as opposed to chip and tar?
It's, yes, it's asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Any other questions? We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I personally believe what Miss Henning spoke of, take Highway seventeen. These trucks are coming out from a probably two hundred meters from Highway seventeen. They can take Highway seventeen to sixty four and up sixty four. I would understand if they're already halfway down the road on the corner of Drive-In and Sabo Ray, that would be different, but they're about two hundred meters away from Highway seventeen. They can take Highway seventeen up sixty four and it's going to hopefully save incidents, accidents in our roads.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And just the other point on the funding too, when we look at Highway sixty four and Highway seventeen, they're either MTO managed and maintained or they're part of the connecting link program, which when we need the work, we would get ninety percent funding for where, as Gagne mentioned, the roads, our internal road network is a hundred percent up to us to maintain from our property taxpayer dollars, which is another, you know, real benefit of having heavy traffic used on these.
I'll see you soon.
Thank you. And just to throw in also, I know that we've been asking a lot of many times to have a set of lights put up the Highway seventeen and Leback Road. Maybe there would be incentive to have something about that. Just throwing that out there.
I'll see you, Ball.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess in response to the less incidents, I actually somewhat see forcing them to Highway seventeen may increase risk of incident because of turning left onto the major highway at that already busy intersection of Drive-In, Leback and the highway, and then having to turn left again onto, I think that's Ottawa, Trail. And, you know, there is that aspect too. So I'd like to, you know, if we do force in the trucks to go this route, twelve trucks in the early morning, that could be a little dangerous as well. And say if this, if we notice that it is causing issues, maybe we do have to, you know, maybe it is in our best interest as well to let them take those those shorter distances and where there's less traffic. It's something that after I heard the the comment that made me think of that, so.
See you, Lady.
Yes, thank you, Madam. I like the idea of forcing them to go on empty roads, as you say, we pay for those roads. And I was thinking ahead for the same for Leclerc Road. I want, when we do Leclerc Road, it's a shortcut that probably everybody's got their GPS for heavy trucks, cement trucks and all this. So I'm glad to hear what we're talking about and possibly in the future bring the same response to Leclerc Road.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll see if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I'm just curious, you mentioned that in terms of enforcement, it's an OPP matter. If we start having roads where we restrict and ban trucks, could we also monitor and enforce with cameras?
I guess I'll take that one. I guess the question is yes, or the answer, a simple answer would be yes. I mean, there there are municipalities that enforce certain aspects, stoplights. In Siberia, you have cameras in strategic intersections. They've also enforced speeding, which didn't really, hasn't really worked all that well in Siberia. But but you, we can look at technology as well if we're looking at this as a more global or more general issue for the municipality. We can look at specific means of at least enforcing hotspots and looking into that and providing a report back to council on it. My advice also on this is if it's getting greater than this information and you want to, we probably also want to have some comments from our police and have a look at, you know, certain aspects and give you some report on the implications of of all of what you're talking about to ensure. And then there is, I guess, I'm not taking the side of the the truckers because obviously Miss Henning has been talking to the owners of the trucking companies who have all said yes, but then the trucks themselves are, you know, not really showing it. And it's not just the one pit that is already there. People use that turn left coming from the east to take a shortcut if they're going to be doing work in Crystal Falls and that, and they have pits down Highway seventeen. They're they're using that as a shortcut and not just that pit, just so that we're not signaling anybody else out here. So my, I guess my recommendation is that we can provide a, you know, a no truck on this one if council wants, and then if he wishes to come back, perhaps a resolution that next meeting, directing staff to provide a more fulsome report on the practice of limiting our roads where possible to, you know, to not heavy traffic. And then also looking at the potential exceptions. Obviously, I'm looking at a fire chief who has heavy traffic, heavy trucks. So then there's also the issue where these trucks sometimes do work in town and, you know, what's the mechanism for allowances and that kind of thing? So I think we need to study it a little bit more than that prior to making a more general policy.
Consigliere Abbi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Do we do we have a half load on that road in the springtime?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a chip and tar, it's not real, real pay? Chip and tar, okay. I would explain.
We have restrictions on all of our roads.
Any other questions? Consigliere Abbi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd support getting a little bit more information. I think there's lots of good ideas that have flown around, but rather than jumping to a conclusion right away, I think if we have a little bit more information, that would be helpful. I'm supportive of the idea of saving our roads and if we can use more, you know, robust and more, not to say that our folks don't maintain, but different levels of maintenance on certain roads like major highways. I'd be supportive of that, but if we can get a little bit more info, that'd be great just before jumping into something too.
Questions? I just have one more. Bylaw officer reinforced that, but did bylaw officers?
Typically under, I I've never seen it. I've never seen bylaw enforcement enforcing traffic issues. We have a parking and traffic bylaw that is passed on and local police used to enforce and now our local OPP would be enforcing. They would be pulling over appropriately vehicles. We don't have that kind of, you know, stopping vehicles on the side of the road. So I don't know that we'd be able to do that or we're equipped to do that. I think it would be a combination of the OPP and perhaps MTO. Liz, are you, how is it getting elsewhere?
Yeah, it would be a combination of OPP and MTO typically, it would just be.
Yeah.
Okay, so just from, oh, sorry, Consigliere Abbi. Just one clarification. If we go the route of, let's say, cameras, is that the town or the OPP?
I'd have to look into it through you, Mr. Chair. I'd have to look into it more with respect to to, you know, typically violations, traffic violations. to, you know, typically violations, traffic violations, when you're blowing a stop sign, or it's a highway traffic violation, and so it would go right now to POA, Provincial Offenses, and then we'll be divvied up, so typically that would be the issue, and if it's speeding, of course, that's also a policing infraction, so I think it's more of a policing matter, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So just to show I have people interested in having a fulsome discussion once Miss Henning gets more details in regards to what we can do and what we would recommend.
Yeah, we'll have a resolution on the next meeting.
Agreement? Okay, perfect, thank you very much, everybody.
Just so that, before you stop,
Yep.
The, the subject matter was truck traffic on Sabrina Road, and so I'm asking or wondering whether is this a deferral and looking at the problem as a whole? Or are you wanting a solution on Sabrina Road, just so that we can pay attention to what's on your agenda, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I would like a solution for at least Sabrina Road for the next meeting, maybe as a resolution, if we're interested. And then if there's any other roads that are, we can bring it back at a later meeting and fully discuss protecting the road infrastructure in West Nippon City, if that works.
I actually wouldn't mind bringing the other roads that we've discussed into this, this discussion, because they are roads where, I mean, yes, there are safety issues if we're sending the trucks turning onto the highways, but we have to weigh the safety versus saving the asphalt on the roads, so that's something that I think would be worth looking at for more than just this road.
Sure.
Yeah, I think what though is to factor in all kinds of other factors as well, so it may not be a resolution this one here, and a resolution to direct staff to provide a more fulsome report of if roads would be identified and so forth. Then bringing that back at a committee meeting, and then passing the more encompassing traffic amendment resolution.
Good, Mr. Chair? Good?
I just want to be clear, so there's going to be a resolution on the next agenda for Sabrina Road to limit truck traffic on that now. And then we're going to look at a more fulsome discussion of just wanted to be clear on
And sorry to interrupt, we're gonna look at just Sabrina, or if we're doing Sabrina, do we want to be looking at Drive-In and Cash Bay Road as well and sending them all on the highway, or are we going to just limit Sabrina and have them still be allowed to come up Drive-In for, for the next year, is that?
I would recommend that the issue right now is Sabrina Road, and that it will create an issue on Drive-In, and so that will be an incentive for us to identify Drive-In, the cloud, and all other roads that we would wish to have, and it could be an all-encompassing road, but we want to make sure as well that, you know, we have to be, I'm not trying to take the side of truckers, but we also have to you know, weigh the impact as to what that does in terms of times and, you know, and fees and that kind of thing, and how how manageable it is for providing exceptions on subdivisions. So I think it's probably a bigger discussion, so.
I'll see you, boss.
Thank you, through you, just my opinion before, any decision would be made, I would like to have that, even just for Sabrina, Sabrina, I would have that impact assessment of safety and asphalt roads, to me, safety trumps the state of our asphalt road any day of the week, right? Even if it's one person getting injured or one accident, I think that trumps a road being in enough shape. And so that's why I personally would prefer that, because I know in my word, there's been a lot of talk about Canal Road, but then if we route them from Canal Road, they go down Nippon City, much busier, more stops, they're in two lights now. It becomes different, so I just, in my opinion, I'd really like to have that impact assessment, because safety, I think, comes before everything. You know, there's no real price on safety or lives, you know, there's a price on an asphalt road. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, if I can just make a comment. The reason why we want to look at Sabrina Road is to protect Sabrina Road currently, so they can still go down Drive-In. Currently, just to try to protect that section of road that was just paved, so they can still go down other roads at the current moment, but then we'll have that further discussion after, if that clarifies that point, but we can bring it back and have the discussion. And if the resolution doesn't pass, we'll have a full discussion about everything at the next meeting, if that works.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you very much. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much, Councillor Tony. Next up in our general government, or sorry, in our committee of the whole, is Community Services Committee, and I will pass it to our Chair, Councillor Ribar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll pass it over to Mr. Land, who has an update on our senior Christmas supper.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's necessarily not an update, it's basically just a we were looking for a direction from council on how to proceed with this year's seniors dinner, we held it last year. There were discussions around varying the model that the municipality had followed, it is a council event. So we're looking for direction from council as to the format. The date we have for council is Wednesday, December eleventh. That's generally in line with our list of activities around the holiday season. We have the parade the first Friday of December, and we normally have the seniors dinner the following Wednesday. So for council's information as well, last year's event came in at just shy of fifteen thousand dollars. We're expecting around the same amount this year as well. And unless council directs us otherwise, we will proceed with status quo. Same with the ticket distribution, it went well last year, we went through our seniors clubs and the tickets were assigned per capita as we normally have, and it worked really well. So if, again, I open it up, Mr. Chair, for further comments or discussion or direction for staff to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in agreement with this Christmas suppers for the seniors, because it's a, it's a little bit give back for all, all the work that they've done for us, so it's definitely a good idea, and it's good to, to interact. It's just a good old time. I'm totally in agreement with that. Thank you.
Councillor Risto?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I agree as well, I think it's a great community event, and seniors who have done their share of building a community, it's always nice to have an event for them, and I think we've talked about other events with other organizations, and I guess the lessened amount of how many events are available within the community, and I just think I've been there for quite a while at these events, and it's always well-received, and it's always a good evening for our seniors to enjoy themselves and give back a little bit to them, so I support the same format moving ahead with this year again.
I, I agree, we did our first one as a council last year, and it was a really incredible event, really incredible experience. It was wonderful to see our seniors all dressed up for a night of dinner and dancing, the music was fabulous, and you know, it's, it's just a great opportunity for not only staff, but I'd like to also point out that so many of our municipal employees give their time that evening to come out and participate in that event, and it's just an awesome opportunity for, for council and for our municipal staff to interact with people in the community and celebrate Christmas with them, and I, I truly look forward to it again this year, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just like that, it was a great movie overall, what I thought last year, and being my first one volunteering, more helping out. And it was really cool to see the staff have so much fun as well. You could tell that they didn't, they didn't seem like they were burdened to be there one day. Everyone was having a good time, and the, the thing that impressed me the most was the dancing, they danced for seniors danced for three straight hours, I, I can't do that. Just shows that a lot of, a lot of our local seniors probably wait for this event and take it to heart, so that's really nice to see, and I think, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand, whatever it costs, I think it's worth it for such a good event. But just for a show of hands, I guess it kind of does look like everyone would be in agreement from the head nodding, that staff can go ahead with the same way, so just to show. Thank you. Thanks again, Mr. Land, all your staff organizing it, and let's hope for a good event this year, and I pass it back to Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Last item, or last section within our committee of the whole is General Government. Five point three point one, we have a pre-budget discussion just on the agenda, and I, I think the purpose of this is to identify some of the projects that have come up in discussion during the year to ensure that, that staff have them encompassed in our initial budget when we start our talks next year, or next year, next month. The plan this year is, same as last year, to do the budget deliberations early in November, I think we saw a lot of good results from that last year. So it's, I, I'd just like to open the floor up, I know that there are some councillors that have had half items. Also to note, things like streetlight requests within your wards, that all needs to be dealt with within the budget period because of the cost associated when they come mid-year, they do get pushed, so if there's anything like that, that has come up, now would be the time to, to identify that, to make sure that when we go into deliberations, those are accounted for, and I think also if Mr. Barbo's agreeable, we would perhaps look to set the initial budget meeting date. Yes?
Yeah, it's a little bit different than what I intended, just to let you know, just, but certainly happy to have a discussion about items, but if there are many items, I think a process would be, I think that, well, first of all, on that point, I think that staff have been taking all of the information throughout the council deliberations, I'll pick one, I'll pick on one, Mr. Councillor Sandoval. The basketball court is already included. So, so we have it as part of a budget submission, no, it isn't approved, it's included as a discussion point. Anyway, so, I mean, you can certainly talk about your, your projects. Another way to do it is if there are many, then perhaps what we would like to see to ensure that our first meeting is captured all of the options. The budget discussion is primarily a discussion on expenditure levels, that's the resolution that's passed. And so, you know, and then council will have a say, especially in your community projects, about what goes into those, given the amount of money, you know, and how much you want to spend, so you can send a you know, a an email, it's not a tough word, an email listing things to ensure that we capture it, and then start that off, but if the other, so to your second point, Madam Mayor, the issue is starting to fall into a few unforeseen issues as well, and so unfortunately the you know, we'd be looking probably towards the middle of November as a start date. So to ensure, we had our, staff has provided their initial budget submissions. And I met with the Director of Corporate Services on Friday, and we provided you know, an understanding of, you know, where we're at now, and now we're refining issues and getting ready to package it so that the respective department heads can be with the chairs, and then we'd be ready to go, so I think we were talking more around mid-November this time, unfortunately, and apologize, but sooner the better, it'd be great, and we'd probably go from mid-November to around mid-December, we certainly want to get the budgets by that time, but we also don't have all of the info as well, which limits us with agencies and so forth. So, but anyway, I take, push it back to you, Madam Mayor, if you wanted to do a roundtable, then we can take notes, and we can do it that way, or if you have folks give it some thought and provide submissions, it all works for us.
Well, I'll put it out there, if there's anybody who would like to bring anything up now, we can certainly have the notes taken. Otherwise, if you have a think on it, actually, for an, you can send emails to Mr. Barbo over the, I'd say before, before November first.
Should be made by then, I'm looking at the actual boss here.
Yeah, it depends on dates, a little bit earlier would probably be better, if we've got to get stuff resummarized, I would do communication packaged, and then to you in a much, you know, with time that you've got a chance to review it prior, so.
Yeah. We do want to get you the document the initial, the starting point with, you know, time to spare, so you have time to digest it.
So within the next week?
Yeah, sure, week and a half.
Councillor Pelleray?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, two things that comes up in my mind right now is I've had a lot of complaints from people on Sylvester Street in Werner. I think it's the, the only street that's not paved in Werner, and it's in rough shape, and I understand them completely. The next one would be the Werner Municipal Building. That's, that's a big one, so.
I believe the Werner Municipal Building is already part of the budget discussion.
Certainly have no problem hearing it again.
Wonderful, thank you. But you all sent the present. I, Councillor Risto?
Through you, Madam Chair. Madam Mayor, I don't have any ideas right now, I'd like to go back and think, like you said, and appreciate the opportunity to do that. Just also thinking too, for our council members around the table, just to give some thought around the term plan as well, we're about we'll be about halfway through by the time we, you know, engage in this exercise, and just to take a look and see if there's things that you see that you might want to jump on in terms of getting going, I know we've done a number of things, but just to keep that in mind as well, and just on the point for the roads, I'm sure we have the roads assessment or assessments, so we'll, I'm sure staff will be looking at that as well for recommendations that come.
Thank you, Councillor Risto. With respect to the term plan, I find that the reports that we're providing are very general, like ongoing, blah, blah, blah. And so we're working right now on, with the staff, on specifics, where we're specifically on certain items. And I'd like to get you that report at a council meeting for that, and provide you with a little bit of information ahead of time. And so we don't have a date, unfortunately, because I have to work with a few other people to just drill down and ask them, okay, this is ongoing, but that's fine. And it's a nice table, but where are you ongoing, if I can get the next level notes, so you know where we are. And so I want to get that, you know, so that we can get a true understanding of what we're accomplishing.
Great, thank you.
So if that were to happen pre-budget, our November meetings are the fifth and the nineteenth, do you foresee having a first budget meeting prior to the nineteenth?
I do, and then I'm often corrected.
Okay, so then that would mean that this, sorry, that would mean that this update would come at our next meeting for November fifth?
Probably, yeah. So the, the issue, thinking out loud, if you'll indulge us, we're going to send out a poll as to your availability. The deputy clerk already provided me with your statutory meeting dates, and that's all, those are kind of out, because you're already doing things. And then we'll figure out available dates. One of the problems that we always find with councils' availability is that, you know, the councillors are volunteers, and they also have other lives, other things to do, and they're very dedicated, but sometimes they just can't get away. So let's try and figure that out, but in my experience, unfortunately, we've never really been able to get on these special meetings full participation all the time, and typically we've had a policy where if we have six of nine, we go the time. And typically, we've had a policy where if we have six of nine, we go, if, you know, obviously, we want more. But if it gets to be too problematic, then we're never going to get a budget approved, just so you know.
To that note, I believe last year when we did it, you know, there were several meetings where we were, or two members, because of other commitments. And we always left it open so that at the next meeting, if there, if a councillor had specific questions on issues that we discussed at the previous meeting, we would start the meeting by opening that up. So, you know, the expectation is that even if you miss the meeting, they are available to watch online. You have the notes in your budget packages. And if there are items, you know, we do want to give every member every opportunity to participate in the discussion as fulsomely as possible. So I plan to engage in this, in the same manner. So, you know, we'll do our best to accommodate the needs of all of our members, but also give an opportunity to come back if there are any issues identified that you'd like to discuss in a meeting that you were not able to attend. So, and I think it worked well. I don't think that it took a lot of extra time, but it does give everybody a voice on all matters. So. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? Counselor Nichol?
Thank you. Going back to the term plan discussion, if we have items that are already identified on that, do you still want us to email them to you pre-budget?
So you, Madam Mayor, Madam Chair, when you're Chair of General Government, but you're both, one and nope. Just if you want to bombard us with some thoughts, I mean, obviously, the staff is looking at me. Want to shoot me? You know, to the degree, you know, if they're operational in nature, we'd be looking at them. But if they're capital and specific project that are capital in nature, you want to remind them, that's an emphasis, we'll certainly have a look at costing things out. You know, I could tell you ahead of time that you're, you know, and no municipality is going to be able to accomplish everything that they wish to accomplish. That's the nature of the business, basically, doing as much as you can with limited resources. And obviously, this municipality is no different. But then it becomes a prioritization or prioritization. I don't know what the right one, I think they're both acceptable. And that's a council decision as to which project you choose to.
Okay. With that, I'll close that portion of the discussion. It's an official staff direction, but I think this helps us all get on track so that we can move forward. The next item on the agenda, 5.3.2, is proposed dates for council meeting in field. So we have to date done three council meetings in wards outside of Sturgeon Falls. So we've done Monetteville, North Monetteville, Levinge, and River Valley at this point. So next, next on the agenda is field and Mr. Barbo.
Well, typically, the items that are less boring than general government, my apologies, are roads and projects. And so the second meeting of, we've been going outside in. So we've, you know, we started, I believe, in North Monetteville, and then we ended up in River Valley, and then we moved to Levinge. So that's why the next one is field, and then the next one will be Werner and that kind of thing. So second meeting of November, I think, is doable for us.
Okay. So with the councils, Counselor Fadah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we participate in a remote meeting remotely? Because the second, I was planning to be on Zoom for the second meeting.
We could, all I could tell you, Counselor Fadah, is how we can certainly look into the technology. If they have Wi-Fi, we can try and figure that out. I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
Sorry. Do we have a location in mind for that?
No. Well, we have one in mind. Typically, it's in the Knights of Columbus Hall is when we normally, where we normally hold. And that's in the basement of the church. But I'd have to get back to you, Counselor Fadah.
That is November 5th.
November 19th.
Oh, 19th.
Any other questions or comments? So I will just take a show of hands if the council is in favor of moving forward with our road shooting in field for the 19th of November.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can I just, if you, if I can't participate remotely, that means I won't be able to technically talk, because I won't be in town. So I just want to make that clear.
Well, we can't confirm as far as.
Unless somebody has more technological information than I do. Typically, we haven't. I can tell you that. So, I mean, our Zoom capabilities with screens and that are here. Whether Zoom technology could be done remotely, or if there's another technology to sign in on for Counselor Fadah, I don't know. You know, there's Google Meet, there's.
But that all requires Wi.
It all requires Wi-Fi. I don't, I just, I don't know. We never had it there. We never had a remote meeting that has been on attendance, I think.
So maybe we need to plan these a little bit longer in advance so that, you know, because I can't be here on that date. So, but if I don't, if we'd have planned them a long time in advance, perhaps I could have worked around that. Now I can't, and I'd be kind of excluded from the meeting because I can't participate via Zoom.
Yeah, perhaps in the start of a new year, we can pass a resolution dedicating the two meetings next year, so council is aware of it. We've been typically doing it this way, and it hasn't been problematic. But, but certainly, you know, the mayor and I just spoke and said, hey, you know, let's, let's this up. And so it's just one of those things that typically we do it in the fall, and we know we're doing it in the fall, and we know it's the second meeting. So, but it's just, it hasn't been an adopted policy at council as to, you know, specifically that we're doing it, and add on. So we can set that procedure more formally.
So could we maybe defer the matter to the next meeting to determine whether I would be able to participate remotely?
That's up to council. Whether, I have no problem whether you meet there or don't meet there. If you want to meet the first meeting of December there, that all works for me. It doesn't have to be. It's really council's wish. It's not a, not a staff issue. So if council wants to defer the decision or pick the first meeting of December, you know, that could work as well, and we can adjust the.
As it happens, I have two meetings to have to do via Zoom, so it wouldn't make a difference. If you want to proceed, but I think, you know, I've been to meetings, participated in a lot of Zoom meetings where people just put a laptop on the desk. I mean, it's not, I think, as long as there's Wi-Fi signal where we're at the meeting, I think it's possible. It's just, I would really prefer if someone could make the effort to make it happen so that I don't miss.
Well, absolutely. Every effort will be made, Counselor Fadah. In fact, I probably can get an answer by tomorrow. I just don't have the answer today. Wasn't foreseeing that. So we typically have not been meeting remotely. This would be the first time. So we'd have to find that, find that out ahead of time. I just have to call the Knights of Columbus, or if not, we find another room in field. Perhaps at.
Okay.
Can you please?
Counselor Rivard?
Through you. I was just thinking like, you know, it's Rogers out in field. Even if they don't have Wi-Fi, I think you could hotspot a laptop and give him a set of speakers or something. If he's in, if he's in the center, he should be able to hear all of us. And then he could talk, and he could turn off the speaker if we need to hear power. So to me, it seems possible. I wouldn't be too concerned. But I don't think the other meetings, too, where we were out of town, anybody needed Zoom. So that may be the reason, too, why there's just no, no real answer there.
Counselor Nichol?
I know there's Wi-Fi at the Golden Age Club, if that's big enough, we think. I don't know about the church basement, though. Perhaps if we can pick that location, that might work. I'll try.
We can look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So staff will work on that, and we'll be in touch to figure something out. Other questions?
So we're aiming for the 19th?
Yes. Okay. Very good. We'll move on to item number six, which is our regular meeting. 6.1, we have our consent agenda.
It is moved by Council Rivard and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for the council and committee of the whole meeting held on October the 15th, 2024, be approved as presented.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next is our planning. And first we have 6.2.1, Drive-In Road.
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Rivard. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 202477, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality, to rezone certain lands located on drive-in roads from rural residential to residential tube, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Any reports in your files, questions or comments on that? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? And then another one, the planning application for.
By Council Rivard and seconded by Council Gagne. Be it resolved that Bylaw 202477, bylaw to approve a draft plan of subdivision at 192 Morley Road, File Number SUBD 202401, for Dwight and Heather Fryer, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie? And the next on the agenda, under new business?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Nichol. Be it resolved that Councillors Josh Fadah and Councillor Roland Larrabee be appointed to the West Nippising Power Distribution Board for the remainder of the 2022-2026.
So as you know, the board is made up of five members of council. So with the two appointments, any questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Nichol and seconded by Council Gagne. Whereas at the meeting held on October the 1st, 2024, Council for the West Nippising municipality reviewed the CAO administration, the CAO evaluation policy. Be it therefore resolved that Council for the West Nippising municipality approves the CAO evaluation policy as presented, which policy shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass. And be it further resolved that the CAO evaluation policy shall form part of the West Nippising policy annual.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Council Gagne and seconded by Council Nichol. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 202479, being a bylaw of the West Nippising municipality, to regulate the setting of fires in open air and the issuance of fire permits in the West Nippising municipality, shall come into force and take effect on the day of its pass.
Questions or comments? I do have one question for chief. I think both Counselor Rivard and I received some, what's that, some comments from Madeline Bodry, the chair of our local OFA, in regards to the impact on the agricultural community. Were there any changes made in the bylaw that we were, we discussed last week that would address, or did you have any conversation with the OFA in regards to agricultural burning?
You, Madam Mayor, if you see on the memorandum, there has been consultation with the Federation of Agriculture, the OFA. There was amendments made to the open-air burning bylaw with regards to agricultural burns, agricultural properties, as well as settings. This was from Ms. Bodry and her consultant with regards to the sizes that is permitted for agricultural lands. So there were some adjustments made within section 2.10.
Exemptions? I don't have.
Oh, it's all in yellow. It's all there.
Oh. I bet you didn't black it. Okay, I'm sorry, 2.?
2.10, exemptions for agricultural burns. So in those cases, it requires them to notify us, pick up a permit. But the sizes to be burnt are exempt, and then also the times that is permitted for these burns.
And the OFA was in agreement with it?
I never heard anything back. I had sent them back a response. Myself, Madam Clerk, have not received any further correspondence.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to speak with them and make those adjustments, because obviously, agricultural sector's very important in municipality. Any other questions or comments? What's that? Counselor Larrabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The permits, would they be distributed in every area of the municipality, so people from the outskirts wouldn't have to drive in to Sturgeon Falls to get their permit? Could there be strategic?
Currently, the permits are, those requiring permits are to come here and pick up the permits, so that we have control over who has permits, as well as the calls. We are looking at the option to have them distributed through the other stations as well. Again, there's finance that's involved with that, and then notifications and making sure that the paperwork is brought in in a respectable time. So these are things that we are looking at. But currently, all permits are to be picked up here at the municipal office, or at the fire station one.
Is there, I'll ask a follow-up question to that. Is there a reason why permits can't be issued electronically?
That's something that we are looking at, but we don't currently have that capability. It would be something to look at with our IT department and see if there's costs associated with doing it electronically and having them submitted that way.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Rivard?
Just on what you were saying, I would like to thank the chief for taking the time to revise, because I know you were, you had already put a lot of work into it, and then you got all this stuff kind of last second. And thanks to Madeline Bodry and Ms. Vantoff as well for taking the time. It seems like it's all been included. So just, thanks for taking the time.
Welcome.
Other questions, comments? Okay, resolutions on the floor. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Nichol and seconded by Council Gagne. Whereas at the meeting held on March the 5th, 2024, Council for the West Nippising municipality adopted Resolution Number 202450, electing to opt out of the, opt out of providing recycling services on behalf of producers during the transition period of July 1st, 2025 to December 11th, 2025. And whereas pursuant to section 15.11 of the West Nippising procedural bylaw, which states that any question decided either for or against shall not be reconsidered within a year until a resolution authorizing the reconsideration has been adopted by two-thirds of the members present. And whereas at the meeting of October the 1st, 2024, council received additional information regarding the provisions of servants, provision of services during the transition period, and a recommendation that the municipality continue providing recycling services pursuant to an agreement to be entered into with circular materials. Be it resolved that Council for the West Nippising municipality agrees to reconsider the option of providing recycling services on behalf of producers during the transition period, and agrees to provide such recycling services during the transition period.
Thank you very much. So it's noted, this does require a two-thirds majority, so that's six of our nine. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
We'd favor to reconsider.
Yes. Are we confused?
Through you, if I can explain. We went back to council to indicate that I think it is in our best interest, we provided a report that seemed to be received, that we should be providing, and buying us a little bit more time in the blue box. that we should be providing and buying us a little bit more time in the blue box transition period, which is in, from July 1st to December 31st. Originally, given the information that we had and the costing that was provided by the supplier, we were recommending against it. Since then, the supplier came and urged us and provided things more favorably. So for us to actually enter into that agreement, we need to rescind the first, reconsider the first, the decision of council to not go into transition, which needs two-thirds or six hands up. And then after that, there'd be a resolution approving that we would continue in the transition. So, so you know that you're voting for. So if you wish to enter into, as per staff's request, you would be voting in favor of the reconsideration, and then the next resolution, you would be voting in favor of maintaining it during the transition. If you're not in agreement, then you wouldn't reconsider it, then you don't need two-thirds.
One question? Next, Councillor Nicol?
The, the transition, did we get numbers that it is cost neutral to the municipality?
That's what I indicated at the last meeting.
So it was?
Right, we indicated, yeah.
Okay.
And I also indicated, not to sell you too much, but you know, this is a big, with a big change for our residents. And I think that, you know, for us to maintain a little bit during the transition and a little bit of involvement, it kind of eases the entire transition over and allows us to.
Okay, another question. What would happen to this if we don't go into this agreement with them? Would our residents be stuck without recycling?
So no, the residents aren't stuck without recycling, but in the transition then from July to December of 2025, circular materials will have to find a different location for the blue box recycling at our depots to go. So it will not be at our landfill site. So when the residents go to take their garbage, they'll have to take their garbage to one place. They're going to have to take their recycling somewhere else entirely, and that, that CMO is still going to have to find. So this, this keeps it in the same, the same location. Yeah, so they, you know, they would still have depot service available to them, but it might be somewhere else. Well, it would be somewhere else. It would not be at our landfill sites. The only way that it's at our landfill sites is if we enter into a trend with them.
So this would be disrupting to our resident big time, I'd say. So, yeah, might as well agree to it. I'm, I'm in favor.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so this is the motion to reconsider the decision of March 5th not to continue. Is that a hand up or just one?
It's the speed vote again. Speed vote again.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so this is the motion to reconsider the decision of council on March 5th. All in favor?
Thank you, Carrie.
It is moved by Councillor Larrabee and seconded by Councillor Fadah. Whereas at a meeting held on October the 15th, 2024, council adopted a resolution to reconsider Resolution Number 2024 to allow it in, permitting council to reconsider the recycling proposal. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing Municipality authorizes the signing of the Depot Operations Agreement with circular materials in order to provide recycling services on behalf of the producers during the transition period, July 1st, 2025 to December 11th, 2025.
All questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Sorry, next resolution?
It is moved by, sorry, it was, it is moved by Councillor Fadah and seconded by Councillor Larrabee. Whereas requests for quotations were sought for the supply of winter sand, and whereas one quotation was received. And whereas council concurs with the recommendation, be it resolved that the quotation for the supply of winter sand be awarded to a Mirren Topsoil Limited meeting all specifications.
Questions or comments on that? Were there, sorry, I do have a couple of questions. Were there more than one bid received for the same services last year?
Oh, last year.
I believe last year we got two bids. Typically, we only get one or two bids.
Okay, and is the pricing similar to that of last year? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Heather?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess the difference in the cost, I guess, their fit is closer to Werner and Sturgeon?
I believe that would be why their cost is different.
Okay, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councillor Larrabee and seconded by Councillor Fadah. Whereas requests for proposals were sought for canteen operations at the Werner Arena, and whereas three proposals were received and evaluated, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it therefore resolved that the proposal for canteen operations at the Werner Arena be awarded to Kim Markcott, and council further authorizes the execution of an agreement with Kim Markcott.
Spin to our comments. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Councillor Larrabee and seconded by Councillor Fadah. Whereas at the meeting of October the 15th, 2024, council for the West Nipissing Municipality received and supports Resolution Number 2024152 from the Town of Perry Sound. Be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing Municipality calls on the province of Ontario to update the Municipal Elections Act with priority amendments as outlined by the AMCTO and commence work to review and rewrite the Municipal Elections Act with long-term recommendations ahead of upcoming elections. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities in Ontario for support, and that H endorsement be then forwarded to the Minister, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Education, the Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery, the Minister of Finance, the Premier of Ontario, John Vantoff, and the Association of Municipalities Clerks' Treasures of Ontario.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie?
It is moved by Councillor Fadah and seconded by Councillor Larrabee. Whereas council received a request from the Jesters Wonder Emporium Limited seeking two letters of support for funding and grant applications. Be it resolved that council authorizes the municipality of West Nipissing to issue two letters of support through the Jesters Wonder Emporium Limited for funding applications to the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund and to Farm Credit Canada.
Questions or comments? Councillor Fadah?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Just, I'm just wondering, does this, would this letter of support to the Heritage Fund hurt us for applying for other grants, or it doesn't touch that? If I'm not mistaken?
Perhaps, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was taking notes. I didn't hear that question.
When the private sector's applying, right?
The Heritage Fund, to my knowledge, does not support business applications no longer. They used to in the past. Now they just do not-for-profit municipal applications. The private sector, their one avenue is to go through Industry Canada and FedNOR for granting applications.
Okay.
Well, Jesters has an application in the NHTFC.
Are they a not-for-profit, or?
Anyway, the?
Application for grants?
I would need more context on what their application is, but if, if, if it would prevent us from applying?
Yeah.
No, absolutely not. Just by providing support, it does not exclude us from applying for anything, no.
Does it hurt a chance of getting grant money if they do get accepted in our area?
Unless they're applying for a competing project, I can't see why it would impact our request to NOHFC, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? And that really wraps up the meeting for this evening. We will be going into closed session, so I will take a
It is moved by Councillor Larrabee and seconded by Councillor Fadah. Pursuant to section 239 of the municipal act, be it resolved that we proceed into closed session to discuss the following: personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, regarding chief administrative officer succession.
Comments in favor? Carrie? Are we, are we off? No, we're still.